Good afternoon. I'd like to call the March 4th, 2014 City Council Meeting to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hodgkiss.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you. Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you know, every month we present service award pins to employees who are celebrating important anniversaries with the city. And this month we'll be presenting several. And I'd like to read their names into the record. And we do have one employee here to receive her pin directly from the mayor. So first with 10 years. Sarah Connect, our acting city attorney.
Hello.
Allison Debusk, project planner in community development. Brady Beck, who's a firefighter. Eric Fairbank, fire engineer. Bill Kavanaugh, who's a firefighter. George Martinez, fire captain. Brian Ritchie, fire engineer. Dennis Diaz, who's the police information technology manager. And Chris Payne, who's a police officer. With 15 years, Mary Ann Knight, who's our computer training coordinator and administrative services. Jeff Lancaster, senior building inspector in community development. Adam Zeitz, who's an engineering technician two in public works. And Frank Cruz, who's a senior streets maintenance worker in public works. With 25 years, Susie Reardon, who's senior planner two in community development. Scott Naganuma, who's a police officer. And Eric Inga Bretson, who's a harbor patrol officer in the waterfront department. And also here to receive her pin for 25 years is Gina Sensary, who's a fire inspector two in the fire department.
Gina. There we go. I know. Well, there's your pin. Gina Sensary began her career with the city of Santa Barbara as a harbor patrol officer in 1989 after a brief period as a wharf maintenance worker. Gina's Associate of Science degree in marine technology from Santa Barbara City College served her well in her role at Harbor Patrol. Gina was hired by the fire department as an inspector one in 1994. In that capacity, she performed inspections of complex fire-related hazards, responded to referrals from both engine company personnel and other city divisions, conducted fire investigations, and ultimately became the fire department hazardous materials inspector. Gina played a key role in the investigation of the 1998 Sterns Wharf Fire where her knowledge of the waterfront was invaluable. Gina was promoted to fire inspector two on May 22nd, 1999, and continued to enhance her knowledge of her field and her value as a city employee. In 2009, she graduated from the Leadership Santa Barbara County Program and in 2012 achieved her bachelor's degree in general studies from Indiana University. How'd you do that from here? Wow. But Indiana, two places at once. It's good. Gina is certified fire investigator, a motion picture television fire safety officer, and a pyrotechnic safety officer where she oversees the city's fireworks events. And also burning man's pyro bar, as I understand. There's a little thing there. Those know what that is, know what that is. She was part of the plan section during the T Fire and Hezocita Fire and has played a role in almost every major fire incident in Santa Barbara for the last 20 years. Gina has acquired specialized training in the difficult area of hoarding and associated fire hazards, and her common sense and compassion had made her efforts uniquely successful. She's also qualified to respond to fire assignments outside of the jurisdiction and is a qualified trainer for the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. An avid animal lover, Gina is well-known for animal rescue and adoption volunteer work in the community. Gina, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service with the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the city council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. And thank you very much for your service. Thank you. Well, I never thought I'd be in any one job for very long. And because I need a lot of variety and excitement. And I sure have been so lucky to get that at Harbor Patrol and a lot of variety and excitement at the fire department, as you can imagine. I feel really fortunate for my career at the city. And I'm always proud to say I'm a city employee. And doubly proud to say I'm with the fire department. So, thank you, friends and coworkers for coming. It really feels like a huge accomplishment. And that's why I came in on my day off. To be here and do this. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for my little baby Oscar. Thank you, Gina. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. I have two speaker slips here. In two minutes up at the podium, we'll have Phil Walker followed by Brandon Morse. Mr. Walker.
Back again. I'm here on my day off, too. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. You've got to be a 24/7 city employee, correct? You know, you've got to expect the unexpected. Who would know that in their wildest dreams that the Harbor Channel would be silted in nearly three years out to a world-class drought? And in my lifetime, I've never seen anything like this. So you've got to plan for and expect the unexpected. I, with my four-foot-ten-and-a-half, five-foot chain link fence that's been there 36 and 30 years, I never thought I was doing anything wrong. It worked for that, the last 30 years. And, you know, we need to come up with a kinder, gentler way to resolve these concerns, vis-à-vis code issues. And more mediation would be great. Toward the end of last week's session, when it was brought before the ordinance committee, you could just see it. There were two ladies that probably had been in their residences multiple, multiple decades. And you could see the trauma and concern in their faces. Do they need something like this at this point in their lives? And, you know, these were ladies that probably had done everything right, and they get sort of slapped upside the head by this. Thank you.
Brandon Morse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the city council. Here again for the gang injunction. I'm very grateful for the Realtors Association that came out and clarified, answered the question that I had. Is this going to be a negative impact on real estate and the property values here in the community? And in turn, it is. Not only is it going to be a negative impact on property values, but people are going to have to declare that their property is going to be in a nuisance. I mean, these are the experts in our community, right? They've decided this. So I'm very grateful for that. And, Madam Mayor, I'm wanting to extend an invitation to you because, I'll be honest, recently there's been multiple challenges from multiple different people to debate on this gang injunction issue. And I've been told that the logical person for me to reach out to, because you would be someone that's very knowledgeable on this gang injunction issue, and maybe you'd be willing to have a friendly debate in a public setting, neutral setting. And I could talk to one of the professors at UCASB in the comm. department. We'll have a nice, friendly discussion on either that topic or maybe districted elections. Or maybe we could talk about a plethora of issues. But I'll be honest, I really got the debate bug, and I really want to debate somebody. So anybody. Anybody that wants to debate me, city attorney, district attorney, any of the other city council members. But really, I would really appreciate it if you would maybe consider it and then give back to me. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read.
Item number three, introduction of ordinance for lease agreement with Shoreline Beach Cafe, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a 10-year lease agreement with two five-year options dated as of March 11th, 2014, with Kevin Boss, Steve Marsh, and Beach Rock Incorporated, a California corporation, doing business as Shoreline Beach Cafe at an average initial base rate of rent of $14,342.06 per month allocated seasonally for the 5,095-square-foot restaurant located at 801 Shoreline Drive effective April 11th, 2014. Item number four, local coastal program and zoning map amendment for 415 Allen Road, parcel A, recommending that council hold a public hearing and adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara acknowledging receipt of the California Coastal Commission's resolution of certification and accepting and agreeing to a suggested modification for the final certification and agreeing to a suggested and agreeing to issue coastal development permits for the total area included in the certified local coastal program and introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending chapter 28.12 Zone Map of Title 28 of the municipal code pertaining to the rezoning and property and approving a local coastal program amendment at 415 Allen Road, parcel A.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. I understand item four is a public hearing. Do we have any speaker slips on that item?
No, we don't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any other items to pull from consent?
So that's going to be a separate item, then?
No, it doesn't have to be.
I would ask that it be, we vote on that separately.
We'd like to vote on that separately. Okay. So is there, we're going to open and close the public hearing for item number four since there are no public speaker slips. And is there a motion for item number four? This is the Allen Road parcel.
Move item four.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. And then is there a motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes the consent calendar. We have a report from the finance committee. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The finance committee met today and heard proposals on increases in both solid waste and wastewater fees for fiscal 2015. And we recommended those rate increases to the full council.
Okay. Thank you. Report from the ordinance committee, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ordinance committee met today to review some cleanup language on the parking ordinance for the waterfront lots that now will now more nicely interface with the mechanized parking systems that we have in some of those lots today.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 10.
Average unit size density incentive program review process.
Thank you. Who's taking this on there? Ms. Suetta.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. We're here this afternoon to discuss with you the AUD review process approach, also to determine the scope or the level of involvement that the planning commission would have in the review process for AUD rental projects, and also to ask that your council provide direction to staff with respect to a specific approach. As you may recall, in September of 2013, there's a joint city council and planning commission work session where we discussed the implementation of the AUD program. And at that time, both the city council and the planning commission expressed interest in having the planning commission more involved in the process. But the level of their involvement was not determined at that time. Since then, staff has discussed with the Historic Landmarks Commission as well as the ABR, the review process for AUD rental projects, and specifically how the planning commission might be involved. We had both discussion and training sessions with the design review boards in October and November of last year. We also had two planning commission discussion meetings in December of last year to discuss specifically their involvement in the process and a recommendation that would come back to your council. As part of our discussions with the ABR and the HLC, we heard concerns from these two boards that they were concerned with the increased workload that the AUD program might have, also their discomfort with reviewing larger, more complex projects, and their lack of experience with the general plan consistency review of these projects. Staff at that time provided for these two boards an approach for the process of reviewing these projects. And in that approach, we included increased staff support and assistance during the review of the projects, and also reiterated to the boards that the planning commission could be involved through the referral process, which is currently allowed by the municipal In December of last year, we were at the planning commission twice. And during these discussions, we reviewed with the planning commission and asked that they consider two review process approaches. One was the consensus recommendation approach. And this particular approach would allow the project to be referred to the planning commission by the ABR or the HLC, or if an applicant requested planning commission review. Also, that specific issue areas would be identified by the design review boards or the applicant. And these specific issue areas would then be reviewed by the planning commission. And a consensus recommendation or a majority recommendation would then be forwarded back, I don't know if you can forward back, but sent back to the design review boards. There was also a second approach, and that would be a formal planning commission review. And this particular approach would require an action by the planning commission. It would require criteria to be established for an automatic referral, and that would require an ordinance amendment. In considering the question about which action the planning commission should take, most commissioners supported consensus recommendation. And I've listed here some of the reasons for this. Some commissioners felt that more process would add cost and time to the applicant and therefore a disincentive. And some felt that the ABR and HLC were capable or are capable with additional staff support and assistance to review these projects. And others felt that a set trigger might provide or would provide certainty in the process to the applicant. There was one commissioner that supported a formal review and action by the planning commission, and particularly, it was felt that this is needed to achieve community acceptance of these projects. We also asked the commission to consider what the scope of review would be. In other words, which projects and what areas would be subject to planning commission review? Most commissioners preferred that only AUD projects in the high-density and the priority housing overlay areas should be subject to review by the planning commission. And one commissioner favored that all density tiers, the medium, high, the high-density, and the priority housing overlay, all be subject to planning commission review. We also asked, when should this review occur? And all commissioners did agree that at least one conceptual design review should occur before coming to the planning commission. And there was a suggestion by one commissioner that perhaps a concurrent review would be appropriate in order to streamline the process and be more efficient. Based on our discussions with the ABR, HLC, and the planning commission, staff is recommending the following review approach. That staff continue to provide additional support and assistance to the design review boards. That the ABR, HLC, or the applicant be able to refer to the planning commission their project if necessary. That the planning commission review take place after at least one conceptual design review. And that the planning commission review the project based on the specific issue areas that have been identified and provide a consensus or majority recommendation back to the design review boards. And we're also including that this process be implemented for nine months to be evaluated after this time for its effectiveness. This flow chart illustrates the way the process would work. The project would be submitted. A case planner would be assigned. At the first conceptual design review, preliminary issue areas would be identified by the ABR or HLC. Then the staff or the case planner would become more involved. There would be a land development team staff review. This would be a coordinated review by the different divisions and departments. And a staff report or staff memorandum would be prepared for the, for the design review boards with respect to the general plan consistency of the project or and also the specific issue areas that have been identified. And a recommendation would be made to these other boards with respect to whether it should be referred to the planning commission or not. So at the second conceptual design review, the ABR, HLC would receive this report. They would then determine whether or not to refer the project to the planning commission. And there's three different options here. If they decide that no planning commission review is required or necessary, then it would, I'll use my little arrow here, then it would go to, then it would go to the project design review as a next step. If it is determined by the design review boards that planning commission review is necessary, then, or if the applicant requests that the planning commission review their project, then it would go to the planning commission. And the planning commission would therefore then confirm the general plan consistency. It would provide majority input with respect to the issue areas that have been identified by the design review board or the applicant. And it would make a consensus recommendation to the design review board. And then it would continue to the project design approval.
I have a question. If you can go back. How is that different from what is currently offered right now under the ordinance?
The staff involvement is different in that this would, this would actually be an increased staff review and process for the, for the projects.
And what's the time period, additional time that would be necessary in order for that additional staff review ahead of time?
About a month or so.
Okay.
With respect to the general plan consistency review, we've listed out some points that we would provide to the design review boards as well as the planning commission in terms of assisting them in, in reviewing the projects. And you have as attachment six in your council agenda report, a more detailed list or information on these points. And just for the sake of brevity, they include principles for development, the intent of the AUD ordinance and its standards, and also the project compatibility analysis that currently the ABR and HLC use to review their projects. Staff is requesting that your council provide directions with respect to the review approach, review process approach for AUD rental projects with, specifically with respect to the consensus recommendation approach, the formal planning commission review and approval approach, or another review process approach that you may deem more appropriate. Madam Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? And we do have a public comment speaker at this point. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What is the disincentive imposed by planning commission review?
The, the feeling was that to provide or to require additional review by the planning commission would incur cost and time to the applicant. And that was seen as a disincentive by the planning commission for applicants.
What's the fee for planning commission review?
It's about $2,000, more or less.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Does the design review board's scope change with the help of staff? Or does the scope remain the same in terms of what they review and give them project?
The scope remains the same, but they receive additional information than they receive now. They do have a staff report that they receive with issues that have been identified and more analysis of the project.
Okay. Well, we have two public comment speakers. If we can, we have two minutes up here at the podium. And Greg Reitz, to be followed by, I think it's Doug Free. I'm not sure if that's, yeah. Oh, Fell. You have to, penmanship, Mr. Fell. My goodness. Mr. Reitz.
Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Greg Reitz. I'm with Rethink Development. We have a proposed project on Upper State Street, an 89-unit apartment building. And we've, in some ways, been a little bit of a guinea pig for the AUD program. And I just wanted to give you my thoughts about how it's worked for us as more information for your consideration. In general, I think the improvements that have been proposed by staff are, are good and enough. I understand that a couple of projects came along early on and didn't have an extensive staff review before they went, before ABR. This is just what I've heard. The LDT process, the land development team review process that we went through and staff applied to our project was very extensive, painfully extensive in some ways. And I believe that they identified all, all areas for improvement to our project and areas for further consideration. I believe that the, because the AUD is an incentive program, that the way that they have proposed it is the right way to go. If our project couldn't comply with the LDT recommendations or was unwilling to comply and felt like we wanted more guidance from planning commission, we could choose to do so. If we chose not to, then staff could recommend to ABR that we be directed to planning commission. And I think that works. Our project, because we wanted to comply and we wanted to be a good example of what the AUD can be, we've chosen to comply with all of the recommendations in the LDT. So, so by doing that, we feel like the greater incentive to shorten our timeframe by skipping planning commission ought to be open to us. By, by, by doing what everyone wants us to do, we should, we should enjoy that, that incentive. And it is a tremendous incentive. The reduced time is a big incentive to us. So I would offer that as my observations. And I'm here if you care to ask any questions of me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a question. If you could come back, Mr. Reitz.
I have a question. Right now, it's not up to you whether it goes to PC or not. It's a decision that's made by the board, the review board.
Yeah. As proposed, we also have the option to ask to go to planning commission. If there are things that aren't clear to us in the LDT, the LDT, like a very extensive document, maybe we don't agree with some of those stuff, some of the stuff in there, or we want further guidance as to how to proceed to address those, those items, where our bike parking is, for example. Might be something that, that we don't understand how to, how to proceed. And so, so we would have the option to do that as proposed.
You wouldn't have chosen that option this time?
This time, no. There were, there was nothing that we felt was onerous or difficult to comply with in the recommendations in the, in the staff report.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Mario.
Mr. Reitz.
Come on back. You asked if we can ask questions, and you keep walking away. It's all right.
I'm sorry. I keep trying to run away.
Miss Mario.
So I heard you use the expression, reduce time. You mean, reduce time because there won't be an appeal to the city council?
No. I just, this, the time between, between ABR and going and preparing for planning commission and then going back to ABR again. We could go to ABR and be back there in two weeks, whereas with planning commission in between, they have to notice, and then they have to schedule it, and then we have to go from there, respond to their comments, and go back to ABR. And then we have to go from there, respond to their comments and go back to ABR. So I would also say that, you know, from our investor's perspective, that knowing that they're, that we don't have a stop at planning commission because they're not aware of how City of Santa Barbara works per se, is a huge incentive to them. They might not have invested in the project had they thought that it was an absolute requirement. And that if we didn't, if we did follow the rules and still had to go to planning commission, it might have been something that scared them off. So that's another perspective. It's not my personal one, but that's what I understood might be theirs.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's.
For the first time, I don't run away.
That's all right, thank you very much.
Madam, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Doug Fell, and I am working with Greg on his project on Upper State Street. I watched the hearing on the appeal, on the HLC's approval of the Arlington project. And I had not met with Greg or been involved in Greg's project or the process that has come out of that. But at the end of the Arlington project, I said, we've got to get PC involved. I mean, it's just essential. And I heard that from council members and I agreed with it. But having now been through the process and watched the way staff is now handling it, because as you recall, when the presentation was made before you at the, on the Arlington appeal, there was Ms., I forget the name of the woman that appealed. But she kept giving you quotes of what HLC members said or didn't say. And it was because they didn't know what to do. They really weren't ready. But since the direction has been given to staff, they've really stepped up their game. They have done training sessions with both the HLC and the ABR. I have read, I didn't attend the plan, the training sessions, but I read the materials that were presented at each of those. And they were as thorough and actually by reading them, I learned a lot more about the AUD project. And, and I think that the commissions all learned a lot. And further, staff is now really stepping into the role of being leaders like they are in planning commission hearings and as they are in city council hearings on projects. Now they're doing the same thing with the HLC and with the ABR. I think the process that they're proposing with optional trips to the planning commission, but otherwise having their active role rather than a passive role, which wasn't getting the, the ABR or the HLC up to speed enough.
Thank you.
They're really doing it right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. I thank you for the opportunity to comment here. I would say that I'm, was surprised by the Mirasol hearing in that they really had, the HLC and the ABR have really come a great distance since, since we were in hearings, maybe on the Arlington and on the People Self-Help Haley-Salso Puertas project. They were at those times very anxious about making decisions on projects of that size, but they seem, the ABR seemed very ready and willing to be able to handle a project of that size and, and voted actually to not forward it to the planning commission. So with that, I think the folks that I've been working with would be supportive of what staff is recommending. The only adjustment I might make would be if we could identify a category of small projects that would not be subject to going to the planning commission. Because those are traditionally things that they could handle anyway, and it would be nice for them to not be encumbered with the additional process. So I think that with, with a change like that, it would provide a little bit more certainty for the smaller developers and, and less controversial projects. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments to the council. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think for one thing, no matter what comes out of today, I think we've, we're seeing an improved process and I, and I appreciate that. I, for one, feel that we're, first of all, that the time that it takes for a project to make it through the system is measured in years. And I don't want to even put words in staff's mouth, but it's, it's in multiple years that it takes for a big, for a project of scale to, to make it from initial application all the way to final approval. So I'm less daunted by the, the delay that, that planning commission would place on a project. So my gut feeling is to, I, and I like the idea, I, I know, having been a planning commissioner, that the concept review can be the oracle at Delphi. And you can have comments that say, make it beautiful and don't make it too big, but make sure you get all the units. And you can just end up in a completely schizophrenic set of, of recommendations. And, and that's not what we want to have go forward at this point. I liked staff's idea of the concepts going to vote. I think that's a, that sort of winnows down the concept review to a, to a, something that, okay, let's at least find out who's, who's in favor, who's opposed, and, and what those specific comments are. However, I, and I also appreciate the, Ms. Plowman's request or, or suggestion about, and it's in the, it's in the staff report too, about projects of smaller scale, smaller size, not going to, to planning commission. Or perhaps being part of this sort of option play where HLC can, or of course, the applicant can, can ask for, for a PC review. I still like, and I would throw out the 10,000 square foot as, as the, as the small-scale project size. A project greater than 10,000 square feet in size going to planning commission for this by-vote concept review. I think it's, as I understand it, that's a process that doesn't need ordinance changes or at least doesn't need the five-to-two vote changes. And hopefully, whatever comes out of here, it's, it's at least that strong, if not stronger. And I say about planning commission, this is the body that we, that the city has invested in and invests in constantly to train to review general plan, to review everything, the whole picture and not just design. So, and that's, that's, I mean, these are the folks that have a comfort and a, and a currency of traffic, size, bulk and scale being part of it. All the various issues are just coursing through their, their discussion week in and week out. And so that currency is, is available to them to, to comment on. And I just think it's important. And, and this is, again, I heard the concept, the, the point that this is a guinea pig pro, a guinea pig. I guess it was the, the Mirasol, is that the name of the, the project? Is that, that's a guinea pig? Well, the AUD is a guinea pig. And so let's put our best and, and most experienced folks in, in the process to get the best project out of it. So that's at least the, the, the essence of my, my ideas here, and I, I hope that others will, will consider them. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. White's comments. I think that the planning commission has a special expertise. We don't have them do design review and we don't have the design review boards figure out traffic requirements. We have always split that functionality and we have specialists in both bodies to deal with the particular problems that are presented with them. In terms of removing disincentives, I think that's a great idea. And that's something that we should be looking at everywhere in the process for every kind of project. I think that there should be some level, and I also agree with Ms. Plowman's comment, that there should be some level at which design review or, or planning commission review is not necessary. And in my view, some combination, perhaps the 10,000 square foot measurement that Mr. White mentioned, a unit size, anything, say, five units or above would, would screen out most of the mom-and-pop projects. But I think any project over that level does need planning commission review. And we should find ways throughout the process to streamline review and reduce the cost to the people who are putting these projects through. I have nothing against the projects, nothing against developers. But the city put the planning commission in place for a reason and we should be using it. The, the potential impacts of, for instance, an 89-unit project are large. And we, we should not be training the ABR to understand what the planning commission would do if the planning commission were reviewing it. We should be giving it to the planning commission. So my view is that we should pick a number and it should be some combination of square feet and number of units that says any project over this does need planning commission review. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I just, I just want to add something for the discussion because I failed to mention. And that is, I would support the, the high-density component as, as the one that would trigger the, the planning commission review and not the medium-high.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Follow-up on Mr. White and Mr. Francisco, I, I agree that the design review boards should remain the resign review boards and do what they do best and let planning commission do what they do best. There are, these projects are not without neighborhood impacts, are not without area impacts. And if they're built with a specific purpose of providing affordable housing and having workforce housing close to places where people work, then that should be taken into consideration as well. I realize that the concept has gone through about the limited number of parking spaces and incentives for developers. I, I get that, but that doesn't mean that somebody's not going to own more than one vehicle if they have a three-bedroom unit. I, I voted for the Corwin project because that project did absolutely everything they were asked to do. No question about it in our process. However, I don't believe for a moment there won't be impacts in that neighborhood and the surrounding residential areas. And I would like to see planning commission review these things over a certain threshold and maybe the, the ones proposed are, are, can be considered to do that. But I do think the planning commission has a more, a broader view of where the placement in the community is. I believe that if we treat these things only on their footprint as a size, bulk and scale, whether or not the bike rack is in the right place or the open space elements are what we decide they are, I think we're going to miss the boat on neighborhood impacts. And I believe that's going to eventually be, be a, a negative in our community. So I think that the planning commission is an essential step. I think that it should be a part of, of the review process. I agree the review process can be onerous and a lot of developers certainly comment on that and they're, and they're right. And there may be other ways to clean this up and go forward. However, staff, as good as staff is, working with our design review boards, are going to take them out of their element and scope. And their scope does not include traffic circulation, does not include proximity to businesses and workplaces. And I think that we're in a rush to create this new housing element and it may end up being something that a decade or two from now is a regrettable result. So I am in favor of going forward, determining a, a reasonable threshold and asking for PC to be part of the review process on these higher-density units. Thank you.
Can I, I need a clarification. I'm not sure if what you're, what everyone's saying so far requires an ordinance change or is it just part of a process with a strong, I'm, I think I'm hearing, Mr. Francisco, you want an ordinance change or am I mistaken?
If an ordinance change is what's required.
Okay. So I guess that's the question back to staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor. When we discussed this at the planning commission and also have advice from city attorney, the establishing a required planning commission review with a trigger size of projects over five units or projects of 10,000 square feet or more, and that that would specifically require a trip to the planning commission, that is a new standard that would need to be adopted as part of the municipal code. So it would be an ordinance amendment.
So I heard that from Mr. Francisco. Is that what I'm hearing from Mr. White and Mr. Rouse? I'm not, I wasn't quite sure.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. White.
In concept, yeah. Now, I, I did say that, I mean, there were two, there were two alternatives for planning commission review. One was sort of findings and, and that whole thing, which is not what I'm suggesting. It's, it's the consensus recommendation.
Okay.
It's a lighter touch by planning commission than the, the findings and such.
Ms. Wees.
Yes, I think I'm interpreting Councilmember White as a little bit of a hybrid in that there would be a specific standard to require a conceptual review by the planning commission. And at the planning commission, the way they would conduct their review is to work towards a consensus recommendation. But in order to establish a requirement that that must occur, so it's a combination of the.
So the ordinance would need to be adjusted to put in the requirement, but what the requirement is, is a little different than what Mr. Francisco's saying, for example?
Perhaps.
Okay.
Yes. And that was discussed at the planning commission as well. Our attachment six to the report today, I just want to point out that the compatibility analysis criteria that's listed, those are currently in the municipal code, the charge of the ABR and HLC whenever they review a major project. So they are looking at those qualities of a project. And we thought that would be an element of what a project at the planning commission would also comment on. In order to support the ABR or HLC, they would look at those project design criteria.
Okay. And then just one other question, then, Mr. Hart. I'm sorry, you're, you'll be next. Your recommendation of just additional staff review, like you mentioned earlier, could happen anyway, even as, if, if we were to decide to change the ordinance, that wouldn't stop you from doing the work that you're currently doing ahead of time? Or what, what would be your thought on that?
Yes, our thought is that we're starting already to provide the additional support. And as you heard from an applicant, how that we were engaged with, the applicant, he understood what issues would be coming down the line and that we were going to identify some points for the, the ABR to consider. And that was at their meeting last night. We also provided a memo and direction for the meeting before as well. And that additional support, I think, gives the board more confidence to ask any questions that they may have on, on a range of issues and understand that the staff can follow up and answer those concerns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hart.
Well, I actually prefer the approach that the planning commission and the staff have recommended, recommended, because I think that it does provide the tools to the ABR and the HLC to do the work that we've been asking them to do. And I think that they're stepping up to that. I've been hearing a consensus from everybody in the room that they've been doing that. I appreciate that the planning commission has extra expertise and I think that's valuable to the process and should be utilized when it's necessary. But I don't think it's necessary in every project in every circumstance. So I'd prefer to use it on a discretionary basis, either at the request of the applicant because they think that there are some, some issues that need planning commission review or at the request of the ABR and the HLC. I don't think we should presume that the ABR and the HLC can't do that job because I think they are. And I think that the approach that the planning commission and the staff have recommended is, is a better way. We don't need to add more time delay cost unless it's necessary.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I realize that we went through and discussed this ordinance in detail, but to non-planning people like myself and for the folks out there in the, the normal world, this is a pretty abstract concept. We talked about average, medium density, high densities, and it's hard to grasp. And all of a sudden, these things start going. But what I'm hearing from are the stakeholders, the people in the surrounding areas, and they're suddenly concerned as, as these things happen. And staff is great, staff is responsive, but let's face it, it's going to be a lot easier for people to, to testify in front of and to confront planning commissioners that. hearings than it is to have interface with staff. And I think the design review boards, once again, you may be capable of doing certain things, but I am very, very concerned about impacts outside of the footprint of the projects that are going to affect these neighborhoods in the long term. And I think that needs to be considered, and I think PC is uniquely equipped out of all these review boards to handle that situation. So that's why I would stick with that recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Maria?
Okay. So I thought we were going for the staff recommendation, but that planning commission, only if the ABR or the HLC or staff wanted to go to the planning commission. Thank you. So what you're saying, Mr. Francisco and Mr. White, is you want all of them to go to planning commission?
I think what we're saying, I think Mr. White agrees with me on this, is that projects of a certain size, AUD projects of a certain size, however you define size, square footage, number of units, go to the PC automatically. And I would be willing to go along with Mr. White's desire to see that, a lighter level of review.
Madam Mayor, and this is in the high-density area, one of the other questions is, should it apply to medium-high and high or just, and I suggest that just the high-density would be the area of concern.
Okay. May I ask a question? So, that's okay, they're chatting over there. I wanted, I think I wanted to ask Ms. Wees. So if we go for what we're moving towards right now, someone can still file an appeal to the city council, right? That's always there, no matter what.
Yes. Each of the bodies that were speaking about the ABR, any decision of the ABR can be appealed to the city council, decisions of HLC to city council and planning commission. In fact, when we were at the planning commission in one of the discussions, I'm not sure if any of you had a chance to watch the replay on that, but we even put on the table, is the commission interested in recommending to the council a change in the appeal process? We understood that when the, some of the projects come to the council and it didn't have input from the planning commission, that you all, some of you expressed concern that you would have preferred to have input from the planning commission. So at the end of the day, after the discussion, the consensus was that a change in the appeal process was not necessarily the right course to address the concern about involving the planning commission. So you are correct. All these decisions could still come to the council, at least as proposed, and that was the, as I say, the consensus and the feeling of staff. I think the attorney, they weighed in a bit as well. You know, these are in all charter boards and commissions with the direct line to the council.
Okay. Well, may I say that I think we went through such a long process coming to the AUD parameters, and I would set that threshold really high because I don't think things should go to the planning commission. They weren't supposed to. Do I have that right? That was the point, is that we were setting guidelines to build this kind of housing in the right place, Mr. Rouse. With all of that, the general plan process was all about looking at the neighborhoods and not making those impacts. So I wouldn't say five units, I would say, I don't know, 20 units and more square footage to, or am I meaning lower? I just, I just, I want to avoid more process because we did hash this out, didn't we? For months, for years. So I'm, I think I'm disagreeing.
Madam Mayor, if I might just add another comment from the planning commission discussion. When we were at the planning commission, as well as at ABR and HLC, we were trying to glean, you know, what would be the subjects that would be discussed. And again, I wanted to refer to your attachment six, and I think there's concern on the part of some of the council members that some of the issues that could be brought up by these projects is out of the realm of what the boards and commissions usually deal with. And I think that that is possibly true in some instances. But with the planning commission, when we asked them specifically, "If you see an AUD project and they're meeting the parking standard, do you think you're going to talk about parking and say that you should have more parking?" And they, across the board, said, "No. If this is an experiment, we set out this ordinance, it requires one parking space, we wouldn't, we wouldn't require..." They didn't think they could require more parking. So there's some elements of what I think the planning commission, the idea the planning commission would address differently, may not really be the case. But then I can think of another example where we had said, "Well, planning commission, would you want to see projects that are near historic resources?" Because that's clearly an area where in the neighborhood, there could be a concern balancing more of a policy issue with the historic resources element and the housing element. And that, that is the type of issue that the ABR or HLC doesn't deal with as regularly as the planning commission. So we were, we've been trying to kind of get to what it is, and I think the feeling is that with a staff recommendation, a public hearing at the board or commission and their own decision, projects that do raise those issues will be vetted and decided upon as to whether or not the review is needed. So the concern that some projects will raise those issues, I think, is acknowledged that that could happen. But it may also be that they are sufficiently dealt with. And so, just a little background, the planning commission wasn't that clear that we want to see all these projects and we know exactly why either.
Can you, for context, I know Mr. White mentioned 10,000 square feet and high-density. How many units? If you have a 10,000-square-foot lot in the high-density area, how many units are we talking about?
Madam Mayor, we've calculated to be approximately five to seven units, somewhere in there.
Madam Mayor?
Yep, Mr. Hotchkiss and then Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To Mr. White and Mr. Francisco, are you saying that below the threshold, whatever the threshold establishes, that it is optional, it's the choice of the developer and the board, whether they, but above that level, it's mandatory? Is that, I just want to understand the motion, okay? And to Ms. Maria, just to offer you some comfort here, I think we're not rewriting things, but we are refining it and it's probably very important to refine it correctly. So that's what we're trying to do here.
Mr. Hart?
Well, in the spirit of compromise, I would urge my colleagues to think about the fact that staff is recommending this incremental approach with a reevaluation after nine months. I think that this is all new, we're trying to figure this out, we're trying to be careful and respect neighborhoods and their concerns. I think that the staff's done a really good job working with the planning commission and the design review boards to come up with something that works for everybody. We've got the room here, no one's complaining about what's being proposed by staff, understand concerns and wanting to be very careful about this process, it's appropriate, that's our job. But I'm very comfortable with the idea that we're going to take this in steps and that what, this is an improvement over the existing situation and we've got a built-in review after nine months. And if we find out that this isn't adequate, that there needs to be formal, regular planning commission review, we can do that at that point. I just, I just don't think it's appropriate for us to take that step at this point. I think we can take it in two bites. And that way, we maintain, I think, unanimity. We get a unanimous vote for that approach today.
You mentioned nine months. How many projects do you expect to go through this process that you're recommending in that time period?
Well, in the, on the ABR agendas in particular, we have seen a couple of projects in the medium-high. And I think at least as suggested by Councilmember White, you were saying, just in the high-density or the overlay, which is, okay. Well, we have the 250-unit count, so I know that it can't be more than 250 units.
And my question is, what would we be reviewing in nine months? So are there three projects? Are there five? I mean, if nine months go by and there are no projects to review, then we're back where we started, right?
Right. Well, I, I think of the pending projects for the 250-unit test, I think this is the only one that's in presently. We do expect another one to be coming in for conceptual review with staff. The applicant is very much in favor of having that early review with staff, so that'll be later this week. I would think in nine months, we might see three, possibly.
Okay. And the one that's currently in now wouldn't be subject to any new ordinance we'd bring in after today because they're already in, am I correct in that?
Well, that really is up to the council in terms of your direction to us on how you want to initiate an ordinance and how it would apply either, you know, retroactively or setting a standard for projects to come down the line.
I don't particularly think it's fair to go retroactive on someone who's already submitted an application because they have a certain process that they think they're going through and then all of a sudden, you don't want to surprise them with something, a new layer of review.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just chime in on that, typically, they are not retroactive, so the projects in the pipeline are exempted from that, so unless you made...
Pipeline meaning application submitted.
Submitted in the review process. So unless the council made specific findings that they wanted to include those that were in the, in the review process, then it would not be included.
Okay. Actually, since you're, since you have your, mic on, Ms. Connect, there's nothing prohibiting, for example, and I'm only bringing this up because I'm hearing all sides here to figure out, we need, we need a minimum of five to change an ordinance on this. If there was an ordinance for the minimum threshold to be decided, but the ordinance wouldn't be effective until January 2015, we could do that. And then if we wanted to undo the ordinance if we're finding it wasn't necessary, that could be an option. Is that...
So you would adopt an ordinance with the five required votes, but delay the...
Delay the implementation until January 2015, which would do the nine-month review process. And in that period, if we find that things are working fine, we could rescind the ordinance. I'm, you know...
I don't know, I don't know anything that would prohibit you from doing that, a delayed start date, and then prior to its effective date, you could rescind that effective date.
Right. I'm just, I'm not saying that's the way we should go, I'm just saying that if there's a way to have some comfort level amongst other stakeholders about, there is, you know, something, a remedy, if they perceive it to be a remedy in the future and yet still have a review period as being suggested, we can, you know, look at it with a little more contextual information. I kind of feel like we're jumping to something, mandating something where there might be a simpler solution. And I'd rather go simple if we can. So that's, anyway. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's, of course, it's interesting that Mr. Francisco and I are making these sort of supportive, mutually supportive comments because I think we come at this ordinance from different perspectives. I think that Mr. Francisco, if I don't want to presume too much, but has been skeptical about the AUD ordinance, and I've been very supportive of it. And one of the reasons that I'm supportive of this going to planning commission is I want to make sure it works. And this gives it a stronger chance, I think. And so that's, that's just, that's sort of measure twice, cut once kind of thing. It's one of the elements that, as we've seen, even the two projects that have come forward, they've been appealed to council, and of course, that would be really great if other projects weren't appealed to council because they were vetted more strongly at the PC level. So those are elements, at least of why, as one supporter of the AUD, I'm supportive of this, of this planning commission conceptual review with the vote, which I think is a nice mixture of our, of what we do now.
Mr. Francisco?
I'd also say that the enhanced LDT process may also make the planning commission review essentially pro forma, which would be great. If staff is correct that the extra work that they're doing upfront will clear away most of the problems before it ever gets to PC, then we can have a nice short PC meeting and it'll all be over in an hour. That would be great. But I still believe the PC review for projects of a certain size is a requirement. It's part of how we've done development in the city forever. And again, I agree, if we can find ways to speed up the approval process, fantastic. But I don't see why this particular kind of development requires less scrutiny than others. When we had the review of the, at appeal of the project, the rental project at the Arlington, that was a good example. Ms. Cafarelli's project, which was admittedly larger, but in the same area and with the same sort of potential impact on historic landmark, that went through thorough PC review because it was an ownership project. A project with potentially similar impacts, and certainly the neighbors were concerned about those impacts, didn't. Had it had PC review, it might never have gone on appeal to us, which of course is my desire, I don't like appeals. So I would, I would move that we instruct the ordinance committee to draft a modification to the zoning ordinance that would require AUD projects in the high-density area and the overlay of five units or 10,000 square feet of space and greater, that they have planning commission review.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I will not vote in support of the motion. I prefer that we pursue this incrementally, that we listen to our staff and the planning commission and the ABR and the HLC, the folks who are doing this on a daily basis. I think that Mr. Francisco's point that, you know, it has to automatically go to the planning commission or to have proper review, I disagree with that. I think that we have an incredibly elaborate process, planning process in the city of Santa Barbara that does a wonderfully good job of protecting all of the interests that we're concerned about. And I think that the work of the design review boards and the staff has been very judicious and very careful to say, "Here is a mechanism." When those projects come before those bodies, that feel as though they are in between those spaces, that there is now a new mechanism that allows those projects to be moved up to the planning commission that does not exist today. This is a significant, this is a really significant improvement that we're looking at here on paper. And we're presuming here today that we know better than all the collective folks who are doing this. And I don't think we need to make that decision today. We may decide nine months from now that that is the appropriate decision today, but I don't think there's any reason to presume that what staff and the planning commission, the ABR, the applicants, everybody here in this room has said, "This is what we think is the right way to do this." I don't think we need to second-guess that at this point in time. We've got a built-in process nine months from now. I thought the mayor's idea was creative, but working it backwards, saying, "Let's pass an ordinance that, you know, and then we can repeal it." Well, let's just let the process take its course. I'd be surprised if any of these projects got to this stage in nine months. And I think that'd probably be a good result. We'll get through that, the processes that the staff at the ABR and the planning commission and the HLC have designed, and then we'll know.
Mr. Rouse?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to respond actually to Mr. Hart's comment about the "we know better" thing, and that's kind of precisely my point. The murmur I'm hearing out there, because people saw us go through the AUD process and they saw a lot of enthusiasm from staff and this council about going forward with this, much to the consternation of some of the surrounding neighborhoods. My point is this, this extra accessible board hearing, i.e. the PC review, is going to allow people to have more direct contact with this decision than they would have with staff. And that's precisely the point. The point is, is that people are concerned, people don't really understand AUD, medium-high, high-low, whatever the designation is, but people do understand when these projects go up and they understand when they see story polls and they see, they see framing going up, they go, "What just happened?" And I believe also that there's a chance, and I think Mr. White might have brought this up, that we could actually limit the number of these things appealed back to council. This could actually be a more streamlined process for a developer than having these things go through the design review boards and having neighborhoods or stakeholders appeal these things to council. So I'm still in the camp of where the motion states, and I think it's reasonable and I think we can go forward with that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Yes?
I have a question for clarification with assistance from the city attorney. The direction to go to the ordinance committee, would this council direction also affect any projects? Say, I was meeting with someone later this week, they haven't yet submitted the application, so I'm not sure if in the next three or four months that it will take us to develop the ordinance and go to the ordinance committee, have a hearing at the planning commission, and then back to council. There will be projects submitted, and at the scale of five units, it will be more than three projects submitted in the nine months. So I was thinking, I'm sorry, when I answered your question earlier, I was thinking projects of larger scale.
Well, I could tell you, five to seven units is way too small for me to vote for an ordinance, so... an ordinance, so I would say no to those coming through the next few weeks. So I just don't think it's fair for anyone to say what may, I mean, you can give them an idea of what council may be voting on in the near future, but to subject them to that kind of requirement prior to a vote on the ordinance doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, I think it would be to the motion, just to get clear, if it includes it or not.
Well, I'm, of course, not in favor of ex post facto laws. Whatever ordinance is passed will take effect if it's passed, if it's introduced and adopted, not before then.
Okay.
Madam Mayor-
Ms. Connect.
And my opinion would be that anybody that's planning on submitting would be subject to the law when the ordinance becomes adopted. So if they haven't submitted before the ordinance is adopted, they're going to be subject to whatever law is in place when it becomes effective, so.
Yep. Okay. Ms. Mario.
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Hart. I see he turned on his light, I'm not sure what he's going to say next, but I agree with what he's said so far, that what he said, what is on paper is a refinement, Councilmember Hotchkiss, of what we've been talking about. I'm not afraid of appeals, bring on your appeals if that's the case, because the AUD process is going to rise to that level, fine. The public can attend the appeal, the public can attend, Mr. Rouse, the ABR and the HLC meetings. And I almost want to agree with Councilmember White for mentioning the Oracle at Delphi, but sorry, it's not going to make me agree with you at this point.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just, going to the priority housing overlay, on a 10, I was, in my mind, I was saying 10,000-square-foot lot is what I was using the 10,000-square-foot number for, rather than 10,000-square-foot structure, I think that's, and I'm looking at a quarter of an acre, being able to have as many as 15 units in the priority housing overlay. Is that, am I, I'm on, about 63 units in the priority housing overlay? So I appreciate this just math, but, and not a real-life project, but am I on base with at least those conceptual numbers?
The last time we calculated, it was closer to five to seven for a quarter of an acre, but, you know, I'd have to go back and recalculate and run the math on it.
Yeah, I believe Ms. Swetan has the Planning Commission report where the trigger that we suggested was a half-acre, and Mr. Ledbetter is now saying that when the Planning Commission discussion was on the quarter-acre size, it was somewhere between seven to eight units on a 10,000-square-foot lot.
Okay, thank you.
We had started the discussion at half-acre lot size, which would be approximately 14 units.
Okay. So I think we need, if we're looking for five votes, then we need to find out where those thresholds are. So I'm curious to hear-
Mr. White, I have a suggestion. Why don't we recommend, why don't we amend the motion? I'll take the specificity out of it in terms of the square feet and the number of units, let that be something to be argued out in ordinance committee. I'm sure the ordinance committee will be happy to indulge that. And let them bring back something in line with the recommendation, the recommendation really being that we believe that there's a threshold for AUD projects where Planning Commission review is helpful and necessary. And whether it's five units, or seven units, or eight units, or 10,000 square feet, or 11,000 square feet, or 12, that exact number is not so important as the concept of Planning Commission review being necessary. So I would amend that motion in that way.
And Madam Mayor, I just, I would still hope that we find out, get a sense of what those thresholds would be, to the extent we can today, just so that we're giving as much guidance as possible.
Well, you're going to have a 2-1 vote at the very best, I think, an ordinance committee just looking at the votes.
No, that's what we're looking, we're just looking for, right. But we're looking for, again, let's not waste everybody's time and see what we have going here today, so.
In response for Councilmember White and council, we did have a discussion in the Planning Commission staff report, in the high-density area, given that the range of density allowed is 28 to 36 dwelling units per acre, on a half-acre site, the unit size, you know, smaller and larger, would be 14 to 18 units. So on a 10,000-square-foot lot, it would be seven to eight units. And then in the high-priority overlay, it would be, the range would be, on a half-acre, 18 to 31, or on a 10,000-square-foot lot, nine to 15. So those are the ranges. And Madam Mayor, while I have the mic just for a minute, would it make sense to council if this motion passes, that we go to the ordinance committee and then return to council before taking subsequent steps to hearings at the Planning Commission and such? I would just recommend that if-
You suggest that to the ordinance committee, you know, going-
Just judicially using resources if, thank you.
So I'll just, I think, the more I think about it, the recommendation you have is worth looking at first. I could be, I see four votes to move this forward to ordinance committee and come back, and maybe my mind can be changed by then, but to me, the issues that have come up to appeal to us before were because we don't have the process that you're recommending now, which is the upfront information with staff and the applicant, and then really the training that you've done with HLC and ABR to encourage them to do what they already had the power to do, or the authority to do, I should say, which is to bring it to Planning Commission. I can't imagine, had this process been in place with both the People's Self-Help Housing Project and the Arlington Village, I think both the HLC and the ABR would have referred it up to PC and maybe avoided an appeal in the first place, which is what I think you're trying to do with what you're recommending. So, you know, I see four votes going to ordinance committee and coming back, but you need five votes to pass an ordinance. So in the meantime, I think the process that you have in place is worth a shot, and I'll be open to an ordinance if one ever comes back, but I know, Ms. Mario, you might be in a minority there going through ordinance committee, but that's, you chose to move from finance to ordinance, so you get all the fun stuff, so there we go. Mr. Hart.
Madam Mayor, well, I really appreciate your comments, I think that you hit the nail right on the head, and I think that the comments that you made the last time one of these projects was in front of the council, where you basically said, if we're going to have this AUD, it has to mean something, and there has to be some benefit for projects to, that are trying to do affordable rental housing, to go through this process. And this is a big step in trying to address the concerns that other folks have had about that process. This is a big step toward a compromise, and it's plenty far. We do not need to automatically have all these projects go in front of the Planning Commission, and I appreciate your support for that point of view.
Okay. Do we know what the motion is? The motion is to refer to ordinance committee, to amend the ordinance on the AUD, to find out the parameters revolving around having a mandatory Planning Commission hearing at some level. Is that pretty much where you were, right, where you brought it?
That's my motion, and if the secondor agrees with it.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
I'm going to say aye, but I've spoken my piece, and I will continue to fight that fight.
Okay, well, you will at the ordinance committee, there you go. So five-two. Okay, thank you. Item number 11.
Request from Councilmembers White and Rouse regarding city infrastructure.
Okay, this is an item that two council members brought up, so we'll have them make any introductory comments if you'd like, and I don't know if you had any other presentation. So we'll start with Mr. White.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yes, we do have a bit of staff presentation, and I look forward to hearing that, but I want to at least lead off, and with the following. We, Mr. Rouse and I, and I know probably all of us on this council, want to, we're sounding an alarm. This is an alarm that's been raised in the past, and good work has been gone into framing, to identifying this concern, dealing with our so-called infrastructure, and we'll get into a little more for those, I expect the folks in this room know exactly what we're talking about with infrastructure, but those that watch this hearing will learn a little more about it with this presentation. But going back some years, this city and previous councils identified the problem of failure to invest in our wonderful city as a cumulative large problem, and one that really needs our serious attention. And that report that was created in 2008, it was a horrible time to pull together a long-term investment proposal, obviously as we headed into the Great Recession. It was just a terrible time to pull together this excellent report that frames the deficit that we have with tending to our city. And backing that, and to back up a step from there, we're so lucky to live here, and we have inherited a city that has, where people have given us, people and communities and councils and citizens have given us over the decades, over the last really century, century and a half, really the last century, these wonderful resources. And all of us can sort of picture in our mind that park or that building that is special to us, and even that road system and other things, they're special to us. And yet, today, those special things are not being tended to properly, and they're not receiving the investment, the money, the attention that they need in order to stay special over the long term. And that really is the essence of our bringing this forward, and I know that Mr. Rouse has a slightly alternative, a slightly different perspective, which he'll present to you. But over the last four years, as we have struggled with the Great Recession, I do feel as if these councils of the last four years have done our job, are continuing to do our job, in squeezing this city to a more, to make it more efficient, and to be able to have more resources available for such things as tending to our city. And by the way, I want to stop a second and recognize Scott Burns, who is here, who was a member of that infrastructure committee of 2008. And thank you, Scott, for showing up today to help us launch this next effort. So I feel good about, I'm proud of this council, of these councils the last four years, in having squeezed this financial system and this organization such that we are running much more efficiently today. And so that is something we owe the citizens of this city, and I think that we're delivering on that front. But going forward, we still need to take a strong look at our buildings, roads, parks, and other city resources, and see how we can, see what they need, and how can we address them better. And in our agenda package, we've laid out some basic steps, which will, of course, need much work in order to move forward. But basically, we're asking, first of all, that we frame the issue, that we have an overview of what this infrastructure deficit is, and I know staff will be giving us a few slides today on that. Secondly is to convene the stakeholders, to develop a strong understanding of that problem. And in connection with that, I think the best tool to do that is a short video, which can bring together all of these items, and that can be taken to the various community groups in the city as a tool for sharing this information. Next is developing with the stakeholders, with the folks that pay the bills and use the services, help us develop a strategy for dealing with these issues. And we certainly won't be able to do it all, the City of Santa Barbara will not be able to do all of this alone. There's got to be help even from the state, regional, state, and federal levels, no question. And hopefully, that will come in the form of fewer wars, better economy, and such that we're able to work together to deal with these deficits. And of course, finally, implement this strategy. After we have some, a broad base of support, then let's go forward with some contribution to the future, so that we can look our kids and grandkids in the eye and say, we did the best we can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, for us, this is a matter of doing our due diligence. This is something that staff does yeoman's work with, they've done it with less resources, and they report to us, and we need to go out, I believe, instead of being top-down as status quo, to go out to these neighborhood groups, to go out to the stakeholders, the business groups, the neighborhood groups, and hear from them exactly what they expect, what they want, and what their priorities are, and help them, have them help us develop this plan together as opposed to, now, we have expertise on staff, and that's the kind of tools we'll use to help explain this, and as Bendy said, to frame the issue, but also to get their triage, and I'm sure different parts of towns had different things, but one thing we have to remember is, we generate a serious amount of revenue that go to all our programs from our visitor hospitality profile, and it's one of those things where we have to reinvest in that business, we have to reshine the crown, the jewel of the South Coast. We cannot let the parkway between the freeway and the beach on Gardner Street look the way it does, we cannot let our parks, facilities, and restrooms stay the way they are, and certainly the pavement and the sidewalks are beyond unsightly, they can be dangerous from time to time. So it's our responsibility to go forward and do this, staff tries to do this, we need to do what we can, to not just get a report, but to report back to staff and say, this is what is expected of us, and this is what we expect to do, and this is how we're going to go about it. So with that, we will go to the staff report, I believe, right? Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, in talking with councilmembers White and Rouse, they asked us to give you a brief summary of the recommendations that the Infrastructure Financing Committee presented to the council in 2008, and then also to update our estimates of what the infrastructure deficiency we have. So I've asked Mr. Samario to walk through those recommendations, also give you some rough estimates of what we think the, you know, the unfunded need is in the community, so we just have a few slides that we'll go over with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Bob Samario, Finance Director. So just some background, I think we all remember this, in 2007, the council did approve the formation of the Infrastructure Financing Task Force, and this was just on the heels of adopting our two-year financial plan for 2007 and '08, as well as a six-year capital improvement plan. In that six-year CIP, we identified about $146 million in unfunded liabilities, or capital needs, I should say. Back then, we weren't really looking at the total unfunded needs, we were looking at those things primarily that we had a chance of getting funding for, or identifying funding at some point, so it wasn't a complete list. We currently have an unfunded capital need citywide, and this means, this excludes enterprise funds, we're talking about everything but enterprise funds, but that unfunded need is about $368 million all the way through fiscal year 2009. This is a summary, how that breaks down by sort of category, not sort of by department, but you could see that we have administrative services, this is really information systems, some of their needs. What I've showed here is the unfunded capital needs in the next two years, this year and next year, as well as what that total is through fiscal year 2019, and this is really the six-year plan we're looking at. In the fire department, you can see it's about $1.3 million. This really isn't all of it, because it doesn't include some of the work that's needed at some of our fire stations, for example, Fire Station Number Seven, we know needs at least a couple million dollars' worth of work. In the library, they've identified capital needs that are unfunded of 8.3, and you can just kind of work your way down the line. In Parks and Recreation, a large number, $65.2 million. In the Police Department, that's really the police headquarters that we have identified there, we currently have no funding for that. Facilities, $16.6 million, that's maintaining our facilities. And then Streets and Transit- And then Streets and Transit Transportation, the biggest of the numbers, that's everything from bridges, sidewalks, storm drains, and so forth, that's $216, almost $217 million. So in total, just through 2019, our unfunded capital needs are about $368 million, as I said. So digressing a little bit, I want to focus a little on the streets portion of this.
I could, Madam Mayor. Go back to the last slide. Do we have hope or prospects in that final right-hand column of injections of supplemental funds, federal or state, in any of these projects?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, these are the ones, at this point, this list does not include any funding that could occur, but right now has not been identified. So in a sense that, like, for example, we might identify some grants two, three years from now, but today, we don't know about it. So that would not be included in these numbers.
So no existing funding right now, or sources even to apply to?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Samario, are you going to break down for us what items are under the Neighborhood Improvement Task Force? Is that in here?
We are not going to get into the details of the projects. I mean, the list of projects that they were looking at were consistent with what we identified in our six-year CIP, they reviewed those. And then, of course, we have an updated CIP document, which is with the basis for these numbers, which provide a lot of details what those numbers are.
So for members of the public who are wondering, you know, what do you mean 8 million for the library? That we're directing them to the capital improvement?
Yes, and that is online, that's on our website, the CIP document.
Okay.
So again, looking at our streets, and this is just the pavement portion of our streets program. So we do have what's called a pavement management system, this is what they use. It's a software, a piece of software that helps them establish what the condition is on a fairly objective, although there's a lot of subjectivity to this, but it comes up with an index. It's fed into by staff, they go out and actually assess the roads' conditions based on some criteria, and that data is fed into the system, and that then spits out two things. One, what the index is, as well as what are the funding needs to maintain that same condition. In 2013, citywide, the condition index was 63, which is considered good by state standards, anything between 60 and 70 is considered good. In 2012, statewide PCI average was 66, so we're a little bit below the average of the state. And according to the engineering folks and streets folks, we are at a point now that because we've been sort of on a, going downhill, if you will, on that index, that it's going to become more and more, and progressively more expensive, to get back to what we consider to be an appropriate level. So it's just like deferred maintenance, the longer you wait, the more expensive it is to come back to that.
And I see Mr. Waziek here, but with the unfund, let's say we have no more money additional than what we're planning, so that 213 million between now and 2019 stays the same in 2019, what would be the PCI in 2019?
Good question.
Very low.
Very low. What, yeah, I mean, I guess that, I guess the question is, status quo scenario, right? No new money, this is what we're thinking we need, and we don't have it. What does that do, you know, where does PCI end up in that period?
And I think this next slide, I believe it's the next slide, this kind of gives you a sense at least of the trend line. So this is the PCI, the Pavement Condition Index, from 2003 to 2013. And you can see that, starting in 2010, it's been, it's gone down, continually gone down. We expect that trend line to continue. And we'll talk a little bit about that, the green lines, but I'll let Mr. Waziek speak to the projection first.
Madam Mayor, our pavement management report does go out the next five years, every time we put out this report. And so for 2017, the PCI would be projected to be at 57, 2017.
Then we're assuming it just goes down from there?
At the current funding level, correct.
At the current funding level.
Actually, it accelerates, because it's on a steeper part of the deterioration curve.
Okay.
So instead of dropping just a point or two a year, it may drop two or three points a year as you go further out.
So if we're looking two to three points a year for another two years, so it would be 57, so it's going to go down to what, 53, 54, you think, by 2019 estimate?
54, 55 would be my guess.
Okay, thank you.
And so the green, two green bars at the end, that relates to the fact that they acquired new software to start measuring the index, or coming up with the index. Nothing's really changed. I said that it's probably a more accurate collection, because it's more real-time of what the condition is. But it's just sort of a change in methodology that dropped that down, because they got worse in one year. So for primary arterial roads, the index is 71, and that is considered very good by state standards. And according to, again, street staff, where they place their highest priority is on those streets that are the most heavily used, such as the arterial roads. Over the last eight years, the city has spent an average of $2 million on the pavement maintenance and construction. So that's not all the streets program, that's just on the pavement, what maintains that In order to maintain where we are today, 63 PCI, we would need $6.7 million per year, compared to the $2 million that we're currently funding, just to maintain that, not to improve it, but so that it doesn't deteriorate further. I think the street staff would say that PCI index of 70 is where they would like to be, that's where we used to be. And but to maintain that, or to get back up to that level, would require over the next five years, about almost $12.5 million of annual funding. And then after five years, that funding requirement would go down, because it takes a lot of effort, a lot of inertia to get back up to 70. In terms of the overall streets capital funding, it is about $3.7 million per year. You can see it's been fairly variable over the last eight or seven years. The last couple of years, we've been able to use some reserves, we built up in the streets fund, that's what allowed us to kind of get additional funding in '12, and some in '13. Looking at sidewalks, so we're just going to focus on streets and sidewalks. The sidewalk replacement program, there are currently 7 million square feet approximately of sidewalks, that equates to about 377 miles, linear miles. Their average life that's estimated is 50 years, which means that the average cost to replace is about $9 per square foot, which means we should be spending about $1.2 million a year, compared to what we're spending today of about $250,000 per year. So you can see we have about 20, we're about 20% of where we should be. So kind of come back to the task force. On January 15th of 2008, the task force was appointed by members, from members of the community. They worked over nine months, they worked a lot, met fairly frequently. And their charge was to review the current capital planning, to review the identified capital needs, and that was from our CIP that we had just completed at the time, to ensure it accurately reflects the needs of the community. They reviewed the city's overall financial situation and condition. They looked at our budget policies, reserve policies, and so forth, and then they made recommendations. And the recommendations came up in two categories, there were the financing recommendations, which we'll look at now, as well as the management recommendations. So here are the highlights of their finance recommendations. One is to essentially commit 10% of our money, of our revenues coming in to capital, infrastructure. We are currently at about 1%. We do about a million, maybe a little more. So we're around 1%, and their suggestion would be to make that 10%. It would also, they also recommended that we fully fund the annual facilities maintenance program to $2.1 million. That's based on what they believe they need to properly and adequately maintain our facilities. It doesn't mean replacing or adding new buildings, it's just maintaining what we have and preserving their useful life, painting, roofs, carpeting, and those kinds of things. They also had a recommendation to this, to assess the potential of adding a half-cent sales tax for critical infrastructure projects. Those are the bigger things, not the maintaining of the buildings, or facilities, but adding things like restrooms, and playgrounds, and other facilities. And then to maintain the option of issuing new voter-approved general obligation bonds to pay for major infrastructure projects. Things are in the 40 to 50, 60 million range, like a new police headquarters. On the management's recommendations, they said, they recommended make the police station and fire and emergency facilities their highest infrastructure policy of the city, or priority, and to reduce costs or free up funds for capital, such as sunsetting under utilized and outdated programs, initiating a zero-based budgeting every four years, close, lease, or sell general fund facilities that are not needed, and to dispose of any surplus properties we may have. And then to implement periodic reporting to the council to report our progress. And as Mr. White indicated, the completion of the report was unfortunately poorly timed in that it occurred right when the beginning of our Great Recession. And as you know, we had significant impacts to our general fund as a result of losing revenues or declining revenues. About 80 positions were limited through attrition over a three, four-year period, and we also cut about $10 million from the general fund operation. That's about 10%. And that, if you think about what they're recommending, that we cut back costs by 10% to free that up for capital, we unfortunately had to do that just to respond to declining revenues. They also recommended to reduce costs and free up, as I said, for capital. We partially met that, but unfortunately, it was just not for capital, but it was to become more efficient and to respond to those declining revenues. Some of the things we've done in terms of implementing the recommendations, we have funded some major projects in the last few years. As you know, the Fire Station One remodel was completed last year. The Korea Rec Center, also another major project. We've also done some park improvements and restroom work, and then the West Beach pedestrian improvements. As to the funding of our facilities program, we are currently funding that at about $1 million. So the things that maintain our facilities, for the things that are outside the enterprise funds, like this building, the Garden Street building, Parks and Recreation building, and the library, maintaining those facilities, we're putting about $1 million towards that versus what they recommended. And I think what Mr. Dewey, our facilities manager, would suggest is needed. And again, just an estimate, we're about halfway there. And as you know, we have remaining bond proceeds from the redevelopment agency of about $14 million. Those have been allocated to the projects. You see there, the biggest, of course, relates to the Carrillo Bath House and Arts Pavilion of $9.1 million. The police 911 call center moved, $2.3, and so forth. And then lastly, what we've done is we modified our reserve policies, as you know, to increase additional funds for capital. So half of our surpluses that we would generate each year would go toward capital now, in addition to the annual funding of about $1 million for capital out of the general fund. And so in a sense, we are, at least at this point, we're projecting, as you saw in our multi-year forecast, that we're going to want to increase our general fund capital from a million today to, by about $100,000 per year, or the next five years. We've also funded a variety of projects with some one-time money, totally $4.3 million. And just to kind of tie back to what the recommendation of the committee was, we did sell some property, it was a piece of property on Milpus for $500,000, and that was used as part of the $4.3 million money for capital. So we did sell a piece of surplus property. So at this point, we're looking for a direction from council as to what the next steps will be.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Mario.
Mr. Samario, on your last slide, did you say, how much have we put into reserves since we implemented the modified reserves policy, the 50% rule?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Carrillo, last year, we ended with a $3.4 million surplus, so we added about $1.7 million to our capital fund pursuant to this new policy. So 1.7 is what we added in last year. This year, we don't know what that number is yet.
Just a question, I guess, to Mr. White or Mr. Rouse, is what you're hoping to get out of this hearing. I imagine it's beyond this hearing, so, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My hope for this, for today, is that we're starting an effort that will become a community dialogue this summer and into the end of this year, and hopefully with some concrete results at that point.
No pun intended there, right?
No pun intended. And the pieces that we would need to do that are, number one, I would ask that a subcommittee, that the council appoint a subcommittee, including Mr. Rouse and myself, and I hope that you will join us on that, to basically monitor this effort and push it along. The key piece that I see of it is that we, that the council instructs staff to create a video that brings together this, what we saw here today were numbers. And I picture folks looking at this and seeing our buildings, our streets, our infrastructure in real form, and then with some numbers attached to it, as a way to transfer, to get our message across. And that would be both through City TV, as well as on the road, something that the likes of myself can take to local organizations and share with them, and stimulate a discussion about what the problem is and what the possibilities are for doing our share of tending to that problem.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In addition, we'd like to set at least, try to attempt to set a timeline for ourselves, so this has a finite process, and we go out and make our outreach to the cities we would like to, or to the different community, and we'd like to get from staff also, things that we have done that are ongoing, things that are, I think, rather remarkable, a lot of what Mr. Dewey's been doing in terms of our infrastructure, HVAC, lighting, the things that we do that end up net saving us money. And the grant leveraging we've done, for example, with the Creeks Fund, and the permeable pavers in some of the parks facilities, that have been fabulous, nice additions, and with leveraging, you know, that kind of thing. So the ongoing process, so that it doesn't look like nothing's happening positive, I think it has been positive, I think staff has done an amazing job of husbanding what we have had. But then to continue going forward and to say, "This is what is out there, you tell us what you want us to do, what you need, and then we'll come back with a menu of possibilities and the, you know, and the resulting, you know, solutions, if we can say that." So, yes, we'd like to inform this subcommittee, get together with the schedule, and then take the Randy Bendy Show on the road.
Okay. We do have some public comment. Did you have questions at this point?
No.
Okay, so, question? Question, yeah, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Is part of this committee's job going to be, here's the elephant in the corner, suggesting new revenue streams?
Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, we're, I know my presentation today is stating the problem. And revenue streams, I think, comes, it appears to me that additional revenue will be needed. I don't, I want to go to the community and hear back, get feedback from them. I don't want to be making those prescriptions. I want to hear back from the community on what does the community see us being able, what would be appropriate, and how do we go about it?
But clearly, what we said here is you're not going to conserve your way out of this problem.
Altogether, that is true.
Mr. Rouse?
And what I'd like to add is that there are things within, as we get to the menu of desired improvements and their price tags, and we're going to hear back from the committee what they want, and what we can accomplish with, in status quo. But you talk about things like, you know, police stations and all that, yeah, that's you're talking about some kind of a very major exotic source of financing. But there may be ways, and there may be priorities that the community comes out with. You know, I'm certainly not looking to find ways to impose new taxes. But these are real problems. These aren't just, these aren't some sweetheart program we've made up because we want to do this, this is stuff we have to do. There's just no, no getting around it. And we're just trying to get a reality check out there with our community and have them tell us, you know, "Move forward, or cool your jets."
Well, if I could continue, I think one of our jobs as leaders is at some point going to be, they're going to say, "Well, what do you suggest?" And we better have some ready answers.
All right, wait, did you have a question?
Comments?
Okay, so let's go to public comment, and then we'll go to general comments back from us. We'll start with Tom Becker, who'd be followed by Scott Burns.
Tom Becker, representing Cars Are Basic. On January 16th, there is a meeting at SBK concerning the issue of the Highway 101 widening in Measure A. And the mayor brought up the issue in a letter on January 10th, and at that SBK meeting about financing or funding projects that are connected to, but not mitigations of, the 101 project. Now, the mayor alluded, and she may want to correct this, but the mayor gave people the impression that unless the city gets some money from somebody for some of your projects, that this city council will not approve the coastal development permit or other permits for the HOV project. A lot of people consider that to be extortion. Annie Caldwell, who's on the Oversight Committee for Measure A, in a letter that he had published in the news press, said to the mayor, "Well, cry me a river, Madam Mayor, you people have wasted so much money. When you had the opportunity to figure out how you're going to spend your money for Measure A, instead of appropriating that money for roads and bridges, nope, you're going to do it on a non-existent light rail. You're going to give money to alternative transportation projects that have proven to be failures. In the North County, they built bridges, they're fixing their roads with their Measure A funds. Down here, you folks have allocated in South County $146 million for projects that will do nothing for you, except waste your money. So cry me a river, Madam Mayor, and for all of you who say you don't have enough money, cry us a river. The people of this county are not going to accept the excuse you don't have money when it comes two years from now to get that CDB and other approvals for that widening of the 101." Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Burns will be followed by Robert Burke, and then Bonnie Raisen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I was on the task force in 2008. And just to do a quick aside, when we got on it, the term was infrastructure finance. So when we got there, all of us were thinking, well, we'll just come up with all these proposals where we can figure out money and how we can get all these projects fixed. There is no simple answer. Took us nine months to realize there was no, there's not, there's not a silver, simple answer for this. It does take problems. It is a problem. It's Jim Dewey, I think, maybe talking later, I'm not sure. But back then, it was, the city was spending about $1 million maintaining the existing buildings, knowing that they needed to spend about $2.1 million. So every year, our infrastructure is getting worse. And you can't tell. You know, everything looks nice. One day, things are going to fall apart. So I guess what I'm asking is, you have, go on with what you're trying to do, get the community involved. It's nothing that's really, you're not going to have a lot of people coming here cheering you on to do this because it's just not really that exciting, but it needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on the task force. Robert Burke?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my remarks are inappropriate. I realize this is infrastructure, and I realize the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force is funded from the general fund. I speak for myself, and these, my remarks are spontaneous. I want to advocate for, but where there's money speak, I want Robert to speak for the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. Ms. Bafano, and education, repetition is the mother superior of education, so that is why I'm speaking now. Our budget is about $165,000 a year.
Million. Oh, your budget, I'm sorry. I should stop talking. Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Our budget is about $165,000 a year. And what I have advocated and do advocate and will advocate is that Ms. Bafano will retire sooner than later. She's already had 25 years. And we need, I would guess that about three years would be useful to have a new person educated. And as I'm told, I'm not sure my facts are correct on this, but originally, that was a two-person position, and she's been doing the work of two people. And she doesn't, you know, she is what gives us our 95% success rate. We are the best-kept secret in town. I would like to propose advocacy, and I think we just need more staff people for that. So I'm advocating, let's get some more, let's get another full-time person for the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. The only things that we have to sell are neutrality and confidentiality. And what we do is, I think, our job is to keep the economic flow going within the city of Santa Barbara between rental owners and rental residents. And we help the owners because if they let themselves get too far out, we say, you know, it's time to, you know, change this, as well as with the rental residents, that, you know, you need to change or make some different plans. So my advocacy is, I want to see another full-time person at the Rental Housing Mediation staff. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. My apologies for interrupting you. Ms. Raisen?
Thank you.
I'm Bonnie Raisen. Thank you for so nobly bringing this up. I'm sure you're aware that the county undertook similar discussions recently, thanks to one supervisor who went out and collected enough signatures to be able to agendize it, if there is such a word, for a supervisor's hearing. And I cannot think of anything more important to a city's well-being than its infrastructure. And, you know, it isn't sexy, it isn't brick highways, and it isn't just roundabouts, and it isn't new police buildings. It's, to me, it's as simple as getting in a car and driving on a paved, not slurry sealed, but a paved street, walking on a sidewalk that is in repair and noting that the gutters have been swept periodically. Those aren't the things that perhaps your tourist is going to be as concerned about, but those of us who live within the city limits and in the county are very concerned. Any excess building supply that the city owns that isn't maximized in its use, I believe, should be considered to be for sale. But I would certainly hope that those figures that produce ongoing deterioration catch the eye of enough people who are watching this to understand that if you don't, you cannot Band-Aid it, it has to be fixed. And simultaneously, with the county's efforts, it could dovetail very nicely. Going after the taxpayer to pay for it is not, in my opinion, a good idea. I think you need to do what the supervisors are going to do, at least a few of them. It may not be easy for them, but I think you need to look within your general fund and within your allocations
Thank you.
for expenditures starting, you know, pretty quickly. But I am grateful that you're doing this. Thank you so much. It means a great deal. Bye.
Okay, that concludes public comments. It's to the council. If there is a subcommittee, I would be interested in joining you two, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Mr. Hart?
Well, I want to thank councilmembers White and Rouse for bringing this to our agenda as well. This is very important, this is probably the most important thing long-term facing the city. This is the most glaring deficiency. It's not response, it's not the responsibility of this council or even previous councils. This is a fundamental systemic problem with local government finance. You know, the state has taken away money for many years from us, and those dollars would have been used to address this problem. I think effectively, the state has communicated really clearly to local governments that this is our responsibility to resolve with our own taxpayers. They're not going to bail us out. There isn't any money at the federal government that, you know, they basically have decided to solve their own budgets or not solve their own budget problems with the resources that we used to have available to address our own needs. So we're left to go to our voters and make the case. And I think your approach is exactly right, going and asking people, first of all, educating them about the problem, explaining the situation, using the work that the task force previously did. I think that'd probably be useful to have another task force of stakeholders convene now to take a look at the current situation. There, I think there was, at the time, there was some disagreement about all of the projects that were listed on that list. I think there's definitely some work that can be done between needs and wants. If you look at that $300, $300 million number, there's no doubt that there are wants in that list that are not even imaginably financeable. And I think that's important to do that very clearly and communicate to the public that we're not going to be able to come up with $300 million worth of revenue. But we can come up with revenue potentially that would address the really important, critical things that people think are appropriately invested in. And I think we need to do that work. We need to roll up our sleeves. But I do believe that it is, it's appropriate and it's honest to say that this is going to result in a conversation about increasing revenues, because there is really no other way to address this. There is no way to look internal to the city's budget and come up with the number and the scale of revenue that's necessary to address these needs. And frankly, discussion at the county's level is going to illuminate that very clearly. Bob Geis, who's in charge of looking at the finances for the county, I think, released a report last week looking at Measure M and what its effect upon the county would be. And folks just need to read that to understand that that, what's being proposed is not really going to work. You do actually have to get money to address these problems. So ultimately, I think what we need to do is, is find out what the voters think in this effort is step one. Step two is going to be a poll. We're going to have to find out, you know, systematically and scientifically what voters think, not just going out and talking to people. But educating them through this process is the first step that's important for that second step. And I think this is a great way to start the whole effort. So I applaud it. And anything that I can do to assist in this, I have a tremendous amount of experience in this, both successes and failures in terms of revenue increasing efforts. And frankly, the failures were probably more illustrative and instructive to me than the successes. So I offer my assistance any way I can. Look forward to the conversation with the community.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the strategy that you all are employing in terms of engaging the public and starting with public participation. I think we should create as much distance as possible between what we're doing and what the county is doing. I respect Ms. Raisen's opinion on a lot of things, but I think Supervisor Adams' proposal is misguided. And we need to strike a balance. And you have a list of, that was, those are some big-ticket items up there, and I just don't want people to panic and think that buildings are falling down. And it's going to be easy for the reporters, you know, to throw those big numbers up there. And people who like to criticize government are going to, you know, jump on the bandwagon and take bites out of us. And let's do avoid that by being honest but not panicky, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I'm glad that we are putting money into reserves. We need to say that, you know, over and over. We're not just spending willy-nilly. So people need to know that we are putting money in our piggy bank for capital needs. I know it's like a little pipe dream over here, but why not increase the gas tax to help pay for the roads? And there's such, you mentioned something about the solution might be regional or state, and that might be a one-way. Our roads need help, and I'm willing to apply whatever pressure I have to make that happen. I'm a member of the city's county Affordable Housing Task Force, and our next meeting, we're going to have a presentation on infrastructure financing districts, which is a different funding mechanism, sort of taking, well, it's always been there, but RDA worked a little bit better, so people weren't using it. And in that group that we get together quarterly, we're focusing on how to finance affordable housing projects. That's our focus. But I've been researching, and that might be a mechanism for us here to finance some of these projects that are on our, that are on our lists. So I would encourage us to, you know, include that in the conversation. In terms of outreach, Councilmember White, you're the liaison to the Neighborhood Advisory Council, and I can see you taking your message out to the community. And some neighborhoods are organized with very active neighborhood associations, and other neighborhoods are not organized. And the way I would, if I could suggest, doing some outreach through the Neighborhood Advisory Council, those are individuals who come from the working-class neighborhoods and are connected to people and would help you, I'm sure, in talking about this issue as it impacts everyone. And I would like to see all of our residents engaged in the conversation. You said something about failure to invest. I'm not sure anyone was consciously not investing. Deferred maintenance is always something that's out there. But again, I do appreciate you starting the conversation, and you have my support in taking these steps.
Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, just if there are other council comments, I'd appreciate hearing them, and then I'd make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Hart, your lights on. Did you have anything else? Okay, anyone else? It's all yours, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, my motion would be that the council instructs staff to assemble a video of our infrastructure needs, and that this council appoint a subcommittee of the mayor, Mr. Rouse and myself, for monitoring this effort and initiating it going forward to neighborhood groups, first of all, after we hopefully will get a preview of the, of the infrastructure, of the, of the video at council.
Moved in second, anything? Do you want to put?
Second.
Okay. Well, I think, well, we got two seconds. That's great. Great. Thank you again, both, for bringing this up. I look forward to the conversation that's about to come about, and I'm sure we'll hear a lot from our community about it. Okay, all those in favor? Aye? Great. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Committee assignment reports. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Central Coast Water Authority, the State Water Project, met last week, and the main topic of discussion, as you might imagine, is alternative sources of water. The committee gave direction to staff to draft a contract with a water broker who we will be working with to find excess probably agricultural water elsewhere in the state that can be transported through the state water system. This is sort of a work in progress. We get different directives from the state almost every week about what we can and cannot do. But we have a special meeting tomorrow morning to presumably ratify that contract and move forward with the concept of hiring a water broker to find extra water.
Great. Ms. Mario?
I attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, and we have some really excellent new parks commissioners on there, and it's kind of funny to see them go through the whole application when someone wants to remove a tree or not. And for anybody who hasn't seen the process, it's pretty in-depth. And then during the storm event, I had a tree fall down in front of my house, and I just wanted to compliment the forestry workers who came out. And my neighbors and I were pretty freaked out. The tree branches fell on a car, and it was, you know, kind of a disaster in the middle of the night, and it was pouring rain. And a Public Works truck was there at 3:30. And I don't know if somebody called 911, I'm not sure. But anyway, just a little compliment. I guess compliment to all the staff. The Public Works was super busy. Things were wet and falling apart, and wow. And then on a good note, I read books at Reed at Roosevelt last week, and really feel good about that and promoting everyone to read books. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Mr. Hachkis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too made it through a fourth-grade book at Roosevelt the other day. Read pretty fast because I, kids didn't look too that involved. I don't know, maybe I lost my actor technique. An interesting incident, and a compliment to Southern California Edison, suddenly there was half power in my house. I couldn't understand it, so I, you know, there's a number you can dial, and you punch through, and it says, anyway, within three hours, there was a guy stomping around the backyard. And I went out, and he said, yeah, he pointed up, and there was half, one wire missing. Another three hours, there was some tree guys there in the middle of the night, and finally, the next day, they totally fixed it. But, boy, that was really responsive. I thought, you know, just one house, out of how many had a problem, they had somebody there. It was great.
I want to thank Mayor Protem Mario for taking over last week. I was representing you as vice chair of SB CAG, or representing SB CAG up in Washington, DC. And actually, Mr. Hart was there with his other hat on. And Supervisors Carbajal and Lavenino joined us for two days of just jam-packed meetings with Department of Transportation individuals, our representatives, and Congresswoman Lois Capps. We met with her directly, as well as staff from Senators Feinstein and Boxer's office. And I thought it was a really productive meeting, everything related to either whether it's the 101 project or rail-related infrastructure projects. The Tiger Grants, which is a $600 million grant application project, came out the day we were there, so we got the first bite of suggestions of how to put together a successful proposal. So we'll be working, SB CAG staff will be working on that. But it was, it was a great, great time to be there, and it's great to come home to rain. And again, to thank the staff, and for those out there, Moby Dick's is open. So that's, we've heard from people all over the world, I think, who've seen that video about the wave crashing through the window, but I'm glad no one was really hurt there. And so that was interesting to see coming home. Okay, we have number 12. Close session.
Conference with labor negotiator?
Thank you. Thank you. And we will adjourn from there. I'd like to adjourn in honor and memory of Ruth Harder, who died yesterday. Her, I think there was memorial service today. She was a founding member of the local chapter of the Anti-Defamation League. She served on the grand jury, just a really strong community leader, and she will be missed. So, thank you. We'll go to close session.